Check one.
Good evening. It is 6:00 PM and I'm announcing the opening of the Fountain City Council meeting for November 18th, 2025. If you are able, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good day, Fred.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson, here. Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Geek? Councilmember Estes? Councilmember Hersberg, notify staff previous to this meeting. I have five members present.
Okay. All righty. Okay, that takes us on to item four, Public to be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. I do have one public card tonight from Fran Carrick for community dinner. Please come down and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Fran Carrick.
Oh, could you push the button in the middle there?
Oh, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Okay. My name is Fran Carrick, and I have been asked to address council tonight and those in the audience. And after I read Mr. Hinton's proclamation about volunteerism, I thought, what a perfect evening for this. So Time in the Valley has been meeting in Fountain for nine years, and we meet at the First United Methodist Church the fourth Saturday of every month. And we've made quilts that we have presented to the police department, fire department, the schools, retirees. And one of our big events is on the Friday night before Thanksgiving, which in this case, it will be this coming Friday, we have what we have called a jubilee, for lack of a better word. And 15 women meet at the church, and we, I don't charge any dues, we provide all of the fabric, the fabric, the threads, our machines, and we make gifts for this event. Last year, we presented 110 gifts to those in the community. We pass out tickets. And these are just some of the things. They aren't kitsch, and they aren't junk. They're really pretty nice. This is a card holder, and we make pot holders and mug rugs. This year, we have probably 30 pillows and pillowcases that we've made and will be giving out to those in the community. And then we have placemats, wall hangings, and we also have some quilts. Fabric now runs about $16 a yard, and to make a quilt, it's about $600. And the last quilt I had quilted was $215 to have it quilted. So it's my delight to invite you to the dinner on Friday evening. They're going to start serving at 4:00. And if you could come, you would be able to help serve. You could help cook. You could clean up. You could pass out tickets. You could pass out some of these gifts. And it's truly a time for the community, and you could see the joy in the faces of these people that attend. And if you can't do any of that, we're always open for monetary donations, and we would use those to help with the quilting. So I hope to see some of you there. Oh, they start serving at 4:00. And from what I've been told, it's going to be 110 gifts last year. Everyone got a gift last year. We've doubled it this year, and they think it's going to be pretty big. So we hope you can come.
Thank you so much for your group doing that. And I saw the beautiful quilt you presented at the Veterans Day presentation. That was beautiful. And thank you for doing that. I do know we have the tree lighting at 6:00, so people can come have dinner at 4:00, fill up their tummies, and then come down to the tree lighting for, what, do we have hot cocoa?
Hot cocoa, turkeys.
So they can come, yeah.
That's this Friday?
Yes, at 6:00.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll be out of there by then.
Yeah, I've heard if you don't get there between 4:00 and 5:00, you might not get anything.
Yes.
Yeah, so every week, just every week in general, yeah.
I think Matt is buying eight turkeys this year.
Okay. Thank you very much for sharing that. All right. I don't have any other cards for public to be heard, so that takes us on to item 5.1, Presentations. I am going to take them a little bit out of order. I'm going to leave Councilmember Hinton to just stew up here for a little bit longer and take him last. And so we're going to jump ahead to a proclamation recognizing and encouraging community volunteerism through Just Serve. Councilmember Hinton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation recognizing and encouraging community volunteerism through Just Serve, whereas the strength and the vitality of the city of Fountain are built upon the generosity, compassion, and active involvement of its residents, and whereas volunteer service is essential to the well-being of our community, addressing critical needs, supporting local nonprofits, and fostering a deep sense of civic pride and shared responsibility among neighbors, and whereas the Just Serve initiative provides a valuable online resource free of charge to connect with volunteers directly with local community organizations and service opportunities that match their time, talents, and interests. And whereas, by utilizing tools like Just Serve, the city of Fountain can further empower its citizens to identify, coordinate, and participate in meaningful projects thereby strengthening the bonds that unite us and enriching the lives of all who call Fountain home. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council in the city of Fountain, Colorado, do hereby proclaim and recognize our support for the spirit and community volunteerism and the efforts, deployment of service initiatives such as Just Serve. We urge all residents, businesses, faith-based organizations, and community groups to actively seek out and engage in service opportunities available through Just Serve and other local channels dedicating their time and talents to making Fountain an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Done this day, 18th day of November, 2025.
Thank you very much. And can you just kind of tell people who might not be familiar with Just Serve a little bit more about what their mission is?
Sure. Can I bring the experts up to do that real quick?
Absolutely.
Yeah, can Sister Carter? Yeah, press that metal button right there.
Hi, I'm Erica Carter. My husband and I, Scott, are representatives for the Fountain region down here for Just Serve. And so as part of the proclamation, we wanted to present this framed proclamation to you all, as well as some things that I have in the bag, and then a resource, a flash drive for you all to be able to have those resources. And just to acknowledge the community spirit and the volunteerism down here in Fountain, it's immense. That's it. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Can you just briefly tell the community about the Just Serve and how that kind of works and how anyone can kind of go to that platform?
Sure. It's a free platform for anyone to use, and they can post a page, a site, and then add the projects to that. So anyone can post on there. Anyone can look for volunteer opportunities on there. They can search based on area. They can search based on opportunity. It really just depends on what they're looking for, so they can kind of cater it to what they're looking for, and look for the audience that they're needing as well. Especially down here in Fountain, there's been several projects that have been listed, and most recently, I think there were 150, 200 volunteers that came to the most recent event. That's it.
So you go to like JustServe.org or .net or?
Dot.
Yeah.
.org, and then you like, I want to, 808-17, I want to look for volunteer opportunities in there, and then they would all pop up?
Yep, and they can come up. And then you can also search by opportunities if you're wanting to volunteer, if someone, an individual is wanting to volunteer, or you can also post, which the city of Fountain has posted.
Right. Okay.
So Just Serve dot org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And you said you had something?
I do. Can I bring this?
Yeah. Do you have something for this? Are you guys wanting photos?
Do you want to get our pictures of it?
I want photos.
Okay. All right, come on down, everybody. Can you guys hear? He's messing around with the sound up here. Can you hear? Okay. All righty. That takes us on to the next item, a proclamation declaring the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday in Fountain, Colorado. Do we have representatives in the chamber or the EDC here? And then Marcia Geek will read the proclamation into the record.
Oh, excellent.
Okay.
Yeah. Dan Blankenship, the city of Fountain's representative on the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. So I'm here.
Okay. Can you tell us about Small Business Saturday, why it's important?
Yeah, I guess I can certainly tell you that, that interestingly enough, and I did some research on this last year when I was first part of this, that Small Business Saturday, the day after Black Friday, which is two days after Thanksgiving, was founded in 2010 by none other than American Express. The U.S. Small Business Administration jumped on the wagon a year later, and this will actually be the 10th year in which the city of Fountain has recognized and celebrated the Small Business Saturday. Of course, the Small Business Saturday is an opportunity to focus on and highlight all of the small businesses in our community that really make huge contributions to the community in many, many ways. And so as the representative of Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce, very pleased to be here this evening and asking the council to proclaim that Saturday a Small Business Saturday in Fountain.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Geek? Your mic, please.
Whereas Small Business Saturday was founded by American Express in 2010, officially co-sponsored by the U.S. Small Business Administration since 2011 and celebrated by the city of Fountain since 2016. And whereas Small Business Saturday encourages Americans across the country to support local small businesses that infuse money into our local economies, promote vibrant and diverse communities, and play a critical role in the local and national economy. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, since its inception in 2011, Small Business Saturday has helped generate an estimated $201 billion in counting in consumer spending at small businesses. And whereas, more than nine out of 10 consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas, the city of Fountain has several hundred small brick and mortar businesses contributing tens of hundreds of jobs to the local economy. And whereas, the city of Fountain and the Fountain Economic Development Commission strive to advocate on behalf of small business operational needs through access to resources, capital, infrastructure, and workforce talent attraction for continued business retention to further the city's job growth and sales tax generation. And whereas partners including Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center, and the Old Town Steering Committee join the city of Fountain in celebrating the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday in support of our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our all-American community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Fountain, Colorado, that the city of Fountain hereby declares in perpetuity this Saturday after Thanksgiving to be known as Small Business Saturday in Fountain, Colorado. Done this 18th day of November, 2025.
Thank you very much. And I think it's going to be more important this year than ever that we support our small businesses. Some of us have been hurting for the last few weeks with what's going on nationally, and it spills down to small businesses where people are just spending less money. So if you can even get out and spend $10 on a small business, it really matters to us. So thank you very much. Anybody else?
Just one thing, just an announcement that on Small Business Saturday, the chamber office will be open from 9:00 to 11:00 for kind of a come and go. So if anyone is downtown in this area and want to stop by for some coffee and some refreshments, we will have the office open from 9:00 to 11:00. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. And that takes us on to the absolutely last recognition. Oh, your mic is still on. I want to do, because I don't want you to leave. And that is the recognition of outgoing city council member, Mr. Hinton. And I was very pleased four years ago, sitting right down there, when this gentleman came in the front row, and he was introduced as a candidate for the city council, and he won. He didn't even have to run. Very good. And super excited to reach my hand out to him and work with him for the last four years. And I hope it doesn't end here tonight. I appreciate your advice always, and your, just the little things you have to tell me. And I expect you're going to be watching at home and texting me and, you know, all that kind of stuff, and keeping your finger in it, even though you don't have to show up at all the meetings. But I have really, really enjoyed working with you, Fred, and getting to know you, and Trudy also, and meeting your kids. Don't know them, but really want to let you know how much your time up here is spent, is meant to me. And on that, I will go ahead and open it up to the rest of the council members if anybody wants to say anything. Councilmember Estes?
Fred, I'm going to jump on board with saying, we're going to miss you. You've been a rock, a steady presence up here through good and bad, and we are going to sincerely miss you. I wish you well. Get out there and enjoy life.
Anyone else? Councilmember Geek?
I haven't known you long, Fred, but I really enjoyed the time we've gotten to spend together, and your confidence in me. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Fred, you have been a staunch advocate for public safety, for financial accountability, and for advocating those who are less fortunate than others. And I thank you for that, but most importantly, I thank you for being a friend. Someone who was willing to listen, who was willing to give me feedback, who was willing to consider other points of view, and that is rare in today's world. So thank you for all of that. You will be missed, and I wish you everything good going forward. Thank you.
I think when we looked at each other, we said we had a common agenda for being up here, and that was just no drama, do the work. Right?
Yep.
No drama. Everybody's laughing. That was Fred. Does anybody on staff want to say anything?
I do.
Okay. Can you not cry and get us started?
I got to jump in front of talk, because that guy can just talk, you know what I mean? I remember a little over four years ago, I had an opportunity to sit down with Fred, and he and a couple of his employees out there picked my brain at his office for a while. And shortly after that, he talked about jumping on board and joining the council. And man, I got to tell you, at the time, I was really excited, because I knew, I thought I knew the quality of Fred from the time I've known him over the years. Getting to know him deeper over the last four, man, has just been an incredible experience for me. Incredible. And the really neat thing is, I've been able to see the staff that didn't know him at all just become his biggest fans in the world. To know him, they've become huge fans. Had the opportunity to hear him speak briefly this weekend at an event, and it just hit me. And I told my wife afterwards, I said, man, we are losing not just a quality council member leader, but someone who is just an amazing human being and a person of character integrity. And Fred, I know we're still going to be friends, we're still going to be in contact and going camp together, whatever, but we're going to really miss you in this role. So thank you so much.
Yes, yes. I won't be as long-winded as Scott usually is, but I've got to say something with Fred. When he came in again, none of us knew Fred, as we don't, any of our elected officials. But going out the door, Fred, you have been nothing but an example of professionalism, of loyalty to this city. And I think Bart captured it well, and thank you for doing that video that you did. Because I think just as a citizen, we all want to have elected officials. As you stated, you didn't come in as a politician, and you're not leaving as a politician. And you've just spent these four years doing what you could for the residents as well as the employees. And I know I speak for all of our department heads, our leadership team and our executive team. We're going to truly miss you. And I'm going to miss personally the days that you would stop by City Hall, and we could close the door and either talk about weightlifting or whatever we talked about on that day. But I can just tell you personally from me, we had a saying back in the SWAT days, and that was if you truly respected somebody, you'd look at them and say, go through a door for you any day, and I would do that for you. We're going to miss you.
Chief?
Coming in midstream three years ago, having finished one career and starting a new one, coming into a brand-new organization in a whole new state, the first time I met you- you, I knew that I had an advocate, I knew I had an ally, I knew I had somebody I could trust. And it has been a pleasure working with you, and thank you for all of your support. We're going to love you, and we're going to miss you.
Fred, same. I got to know you well over the last couple of years as I became the police chief. Your service to this community is noticed. Your quiet advice to me is appreciated, and just your continued service to help military veterans is appreciated more than you know, and I'm not one of those, but I know the work you're doing. Please keep doing that. And to all of your friends and family that are here, just a little quick story, when we were teaching some active shooter training to the council on what to do in case something like that happened, Fred decided he was going to jump that dais up there and take the suspect into custody. He's still an athlete. Sir, I appreciate you and well wishes in your future.
I very well remember that day. I think you surprised yourself even.
I did.
Yeah. It was just so ingrained and automatic. So, yeah.
If I can chime in real quick.
Yes, please.
Fred, my time representing you was short, but I never had any doubt that I was representing an honorable and well-thought-out person, and I wish you the best moving forward, and thank you for your service.
All right, any other staff?
I just want to say thank you from the clerk's office, and you can come answer our phones any day.
Wait a minute, I tried to come in one day and answer the phones, and they wouldn't let me. Oh, my gosh, okay. Hmm, okay. All right, anybody else? All right, I am going to open it up to the audience. You can blame me, I called your wife. And so, Trudy, where are you? There you are. Trudy, thank you so much for getting so many friends and family here to recognize Fred. So anyone from there would like to come down and say something for a minute or two, please feel forward to come down. You push the middle button on the speaker there, and you're more than welcome to come down and say something. Okay. There you go. And it's not a buffet, folks, somebody go first, okay?
So my name's Ryan Teeples. I'm not from the City of Fountain, but I've known Fred for a number of years. I'm happy that he's leaving you, because it means he comes back to me on Tuesday night. But I echo everything that's been said, he's a wonderful man, he's a man of character. He loves the people that he serves with, and it's clear that he's made an impression here. And so, I'm grateful to have him come back to help me on Tuesdays, but appreciate your service, Fred.
Well, you better make sure he's paying attention, because he's probably going to have his earbud in, listening in on the council meetings, making sure we're still doing it right, so.
Listening to the Celtic game.
Or listen to the Celtic game, yeah, one or the other, huh? Okay.
I appreciate all the service that you gave to the city. I got to see some of the behind-the-scenes stuff and get to know a lot of these great folks. My husband is always great at bringing me along into things, so I appreciate that. And you've been wonderful and consistent, and you're very well-loved, and I think that's pretty evident tonight. And I love you, and I'm probably the only one that's glad you're done.
Yeah, famous last words, I don't think you're ever quite done, huh? Anybody else?
And I have notes. Sir, I just want to say how much I appreciate you. We have not always agreed, but you've demonstrated over the last couple of years specifically how much our commonalities are more important than our differences, and how with some work we can come to a middle ground on things, and we're always willing to take time to do that. I appreciate how much you've served this community, how it reflects, you know, your service throughout, throughout the military. I learned recently that, you know, you actually completed the contracting officer course, which, you know, I think that's probably the biggest achievement ever, anybody that's ever been through that, that you managed to like make it through it and probably stay awake the entire time is an amazing accomplishment, I appreciate that. But you are going to be very much missed, and I truly appreciate how much you have given back to this community.
My name is Brian Haywood. I've known Fred for about 11 years now. He and I have done a lot of projects together, and we've become very good friends. He's seen two of my children come into this world, and I can speak for my family in saying that Fred is a wonderful guy, he's a great friend, a good example to everyone. And it's been a pleasure knowing you and working with you and being your friend, and we support you in this great accomplishment and all that you've done, and just want to say thank you.
Okay, so anyone else who'd like to come down?
I've known you for a long time, and every time I talk to you, you always put a smile on my face. You're always willing to listen, eager to learn, and always willing to help me out and help others out. We have our disagreements in sports and stuff like that, but you're a good friend to the rest of my family and myself, and I appreciate talking to you.
Hi, Dad. So I've known the councilman for about 26, almost 27 years now. And we've also had our disagreements. But I really appreciate the example he's shown me just throughout my life about being consistent and showing up for others. He's done that in multiple facets of his life, in military, with his family, in church, and in civic duty. And I've always really appreciated that example. And although like we disagree pretty frequently about how to go about different things, whether that's on a little scale or for like our city or our country, I do appreciate that we always agree on our purpose, which is to help each other to be better as a community. So thank you and I appreciate you, and I love you.
All right, anyone else?
So I'm Brian's wife, but thank you, Fred, for all your service to the community. I get my hair done with your wife, and I know the hardship she misses you at times, but we're so grateful for all your service, and serving my family too. You almost feel like a dad to our family, and we're just grateful for everything, so.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back up here to the dais, and would you like to say anything? Are you able to say anything?
Yeah, I'm able to say a couple of things. Hopefully I can hold it together. I appreciate everyone's comments, and it doesn't go unnoticed. I love to serve. I love to help people. I have this saying, and I actually stole it from an executive CEO over at Craig Hospital, but I'm a warrior for the underdog. I don't like to see people hurt. I don't. I don't like to see people who struggle, but I understand that that struggle has to happen in this life. That's how we learn, and that's how we grow. But my heart aches when things are not going right for people. I try to be a friend to everyone I meet and help them do whatever, whatever that is, and I hope that I'm able to do that. As I took on this opportunity to serve as your councilperson, I didn't do it lightly. It wasn't something that I wanted to do for recognition at all. Who cares that I'm a city councilperson? I really wanted just to help move the city forward. I've been in the city since 2005, on and off military commitment, brought me here and our family. I have two kids who were born here at Evans Army Hospital, and so I have ties and I have roots of this city, and I root for it. I want it to be the best city that it can be, and I think that we are the best city. That's just me being biased, sorry for those that are not from the City of Fountain, but I love this city, and I wouldn't change it for anything. And so, as I've taken this journey over the last four years, I've had time to reflect coming to this point. Yes, I'm excited, because it takes a lot of time to serve, and if you're doing it right, it takes a lot of your time, it takes you away from your family. But I have great family that support me, my wife supports me. She really didn't support me, but she supported me, came on board, and I appreciate her. But all of this could not be possible without my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I am grateful for the opportunity to be able to serve in this capacity and to be able to give back, and He's given me more than anything and anybody. And so, I'm grateful for my Savior, and I'm grateful for the people here in Fountain, and I'm grateful for my colleagues to my left. And Jennifer's not here, but I'm grateful for her and all the wisdom that they have imparted on me. I didn't know anything about city government. I knew there were some issues, and I wanted to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, and this is how I chose to do it, and to help my city. And so, I appreciate all those who have come out tonight and said some great, amazing things. Thank you so much, and I look forward to the city moving forward in the future. You have great staff, great staff. These are great people, great men and women that work here. They spend countless hours on behalf of you, and I see it, they work hard, and I appreciate their hard work, and I appreciate their compassion and empathy that they have for our city. They want nothing more for the best for the City of Fountain. Nobody's in it for themselves here. They're really looking to move the city forward, and I appreciate all the time that they put into it. Gentlemen, sisters, ladies, I appreciate everything that you do. I can't name everybody, but you guys are amazing, and I've had just an awesome opportunity to have a front-row seat and watch you guys in action and watch you work. So I appreciate that, appreciate everything that you do. And my last thing to do for them, and it'll be my last hurrah, but I would like to salute the city and salute the staff and our colleagues, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, I know, he's got you, huh? All right, do we have a plaque?
Oh, yes, we do.
Okay. Oh, well, he's going to go get the plaque. Okay, all righty, we'll get there. I'll tell you what, while he's getting the plaque, why don't we get everybody down front for a photo?
Okay.
Read it in the record, Fred.
Okay.
This is a plaque presented to Frederick Hinton, Councilmember-at-Large, 2021 to 2025. Greatness is not found in possessions, power, position, or prestige. It is discovered in goodness, humility, service, and character. William Arthur Ward. Thank you for your service to the citizens of Fountain.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Cannot believe four years has gone by. It's just, geez, it's just flying by. All righty, that takes us on to item 5.2. If y'all want to leave, it's okay to leave at this point, and if you want to stay, you can stay too. Okay. All right, that takes us on to item 4.2, Board, Commission, and Committee Appointments. There are none tonight. Correspondence, Comments, and Ex officio reports. Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one announcement, and you mentioned it earlier, but Friday night will be our tree lighting ceremony right out front here. Should be a fun, short, fun event, like it every year. Oh, time, 6:00. People start showing up around 5:30 or so, and usually we're done around 6:30. We'll have hot cocoa, cookies, choir singing. It's a fun event.
All right, go fill up with Fran, and then come over and light the tree. Okay. All righty, anybody else down the table? Chiefs, either with chief? Okay, all righty, Councilmember Rick?
I want to say thank you to Fountain Up, to VFW 6461 and American Legion Post 38 for an outstanding Veterans Day ceremony this last Tuesday. I'd also like to recognize Mrs. Kerrick and Sotime in the Valley for the quilt they did that they gave out at the ceremony. It was a lovely event, and thank you for everyone who participated. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Geek? Nothing tonight. Councilmember Estes?
I just want to give out a shout to the Parks Department and the Friends of Fountain Fairview Cemetery for dedicating the Civil War Memorial. We have 21 veterans of the Civil War located in our cemetery, which is pretty incredible, because we have a very small cemetery. But they will also be celebrating, the cemetery through the VFW is celebrating Wreaths Across America, and that will be December 13th, I believe it is. They're looking for donors and sponsors for the wreaths across America. Please reach out to the VFW if you'd like to contribute to that. It's $17 a wreath. We want to make sure every veteran in the cemetery has a wreath. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just quick, I want to give a quick shout-out to Ashley Reader, the Housing Director. I've had the opportunity to serve on that board. One of my passions is those that, you know, affordable housing, and so spending time on that and with those beautiful ladies there has been just eye-opening in just how we can, it's possible, we can house, we can house people, but sometimes there's a lot of things that get in the way, but they do a beautiful job, doing the best that they can, getting people, and housing that is, as you all know, it's expensive out there. And so, I just want to throw my hat out there and let them know that I appreciate their, all their service and all that they do.
Thank you. Okay, I attended the Pike's Peak Area Council of Government meeting, and one of the topics there was discussing the potential ballot measure for the Front Range Passenger Rail. They are hoping to put that, I think they are going to put it on the ballot for this next November, and that will be a tax, I believe it's a sales tax, Scott, sales tax? Sales tax for people who live within this Front Range Passenger District. The idea is to finish the areas up north, like Fort Collins to Denver, that they've been collecting money for for over 15 years and have never built it. They want to build that first and make it a proof of concept, and the soonest, if everything goes perfect and the ballot measure passes, that they would have any of that transportation would be 2029. And if everything aligns perfect, the soonest there would be anything down in this area after collecting money beginning in 2027 would be 2034. Just a reminder, they want to put trains through our community at 75 to 79 miles per hour. hour, an estimated three to six round trips daily through our community in addition to the freight rails. They had some interesting things to say that I wasn't quite sure that was true. They tried to say the passenger rail would take priority over freight so that they can keep their timetables consistent. So we kind of challenged them on that thought. So be educating yourself when you see that being discussed in terms of, do you want to spend your money on a Front Range Passenger Rail that could be a number of years down the road? And there will be a lot more details to come on that. So that was the, kind of the big thing we discussed there. So with that, we will move on to Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have Items A and B. What would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as written.
Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no deliberation, please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Thank you. That takes us to Old Business. Item 8A, Second Reading of Ordinance 1850, an ordinance setting appropriations for the City of Fountain, Colorado for the fiscal year 2026. And I don't see Ms. Dale, so I assume that's going to be you.
Madam Mayor, Shawna is online. She's at, actually at a GFOA conference right now, CGFOA. And I think we have her, is that right, Paul? Shawna?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to attend virtually tonight. This is the first time I've done this, so I apologize if there's any errors going through this. Paul's going to be running the PowerPoint for me, so hopefully that is up on the projector as well. So again, this is the second reading of the ordinance to set the budget beginning January 1st of next year for 2026. And a public hearing is required prior to the adoption, which we did that with City Council on the October 28th regular City Council meeting. And this budget was adopted as part of the, or was, excuse me, initially proposed as part of the two-year biannual budget for 2526. And after several months of meetings with staff and a work session with City Council on October 7th, we came up with some revisions to the original 2026 budget. And the following Exhibit A, which will be on the next couple of slides, shows all of the revenues and expenses by fund. And the, these charts and tables will also reflect the changes that were requested by City Council during the first reading on October 28th. A summary of some of those changes for the general fund revisions for the changes from first reading include a 2.5% merit increase for all city staff, additions of a mobile fleet service truck for our fleet department, an electronic message board for our streets department, some police mobile data terminals for their patrol cars, a replacement fence for the cemetery, a contingency fund for some emergency facility building repairs should those arise, and also the inclusion of the My Town AI software. Additionally, council asked that we increase the debt service budget to pay off several outstanding loans and leases as part of the 2026 budget. On the electric, water, and miscellaneous funds side, there were only a few minor revisions from first reading, and that was the inclusion of a 2.5% merit increase for city staff in these funds, except for the electric line operations staff. That includes a 4.5% market pay adjustment, just for the electric line operations staff, including your linemen and your apprentice. Other than that, there was no other changes from first reading. Paul, if you could go to the next slide for me, please. This slide here is all about the general fund. On the left-hand side, you'll see all of the revenues. And if you notice the column in the middle that says First Reading Budget Adjustments, there were no adjustments to the 2026 revenues. On the right-hand side are the expenditures by department. And again, the column in the middle has all of those changes that I just went over in the summary on the previous slide. The brunt of these changes for every department is going to be the salaries and benefits adjustments for that 2.5% merit increase. Overall, at the bottom in the middle, you'll see that it's going to be, there's an adjustment of about $1.3 million from the first reading. So our total expenditures for 2026 right now are set to be about $54.8 million. And we will use about 1.4, almost 1.5 million out of our reserves for 2026 over our incoming revenues that are set for '26. Paul, if you could go to the next slide, please. This slide here on the left-hand side is the Water Fund. The top section is the revenues for the Water Fund and the bottom section is the expenditures. And if you notice, the only change to, since first reading, excuse me, is just the salaries and wages, which is that 2.5% increase, so about almost $39,000. Overall, the Water Fund will still have revenues higher than expenditures for 2026 of about $2 million. On the right-hand side is the Electric Fund. Again, the only changes since first reading are for the salaries and benefits. That would be 2.5% for all staff, except for the electric line operations crew, which would get that 4.5% market adjustment. Overall, the bottom right-hand corner, you'll notice that revenues are still over and above expenditures in the Electric Fund of about $2.7 million. And then the last slide, if you would please, Paul. This one here is just all the miscellaneous funds. And if you notice, the first reading adjustments is actually that fourth column over. And again, those changes there, that $35,000 for the ambulance fund and the almost $14,000 for public transportation, those changes are all related to that 2.5% merit increase. Overall, in the very bottom right-hand corner of this slide, you'll see that the grand total for all funds, we had, still have revenues coming in for 2026 projected above the expenditures, even with the changes from first reading of about $2.1 million to the positive, which is great news considering the economy and some of the surrounding communities. So with that, I will open it up to questions from council or anybody else.
Could any council members up here who have any questions about what was presented? Okay. Are there anybody in the audience that has any questions about anything that was presented? Okay. I'll bring it back up here to the dais. I think part of the ask was that we had some questions on some items that we were going to possibly, we needed prices for to possibly include in the next, in the agenda, in the budget?
All right. And the council got that email.
Right.
And it laid it out. And you can see on there that some of that's included in there. Others, we're, we're going to come back, for example, the, you remember the Axon, the discussion around the Axon, the, the items for the police? That'll be coming back in next year's budget for the 27-year budget.
Okay.
And we hadn't received any more questions or comments about those items.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I don't know, I talked to you, Scott, and I talked to the mayor. Possibly maybe adding in a signage in front of City Hall. I mean, I'm not a big fan of that, the one that we have out there right now. Nothing against, it just aesthetically isn't pleasing. And I think if we can get a, and I talked to IT about this, if there's a possibility that we could swing that into the budget as far as just electronic board, just something similar that they have in front of the firehouse.
So yeah, for clarification, so removing, eliminating that three-sided kiosk out here and replacing it, maybe not in the same spot, but in a better location with an electronic LED reader board. And we priced that out between $15,000 and $20,000. It wouldn't have to be two-sided depending on how we put it up. Two-sided is obviously more expensive, but it would be very similar, although the technology is newer, probably be a better, higher resolution than what we have now. And we, and if the council wanted to move forward with that, we could, Shawna will include that in the budget and then we would go out and actually get some actual costs. Those are some real quick estimates that we got just looking online.
I, I don't like that kiosk out there.
I've heard that from at least a couple of you.
Yeah, and I'd like to get some pricing in it and, and include it in the budget. And then if we don't use it, we just put it back in. And that way we can get rid of the banners that we put out front too.
Yes, absolutely.
That are like collapsing half the time.
We'd get rid of those banners as well.
I think it would make it look a little bit nicer.
Hundred percent.
But I, I want to think aesthetically on how that would look in front of City Hall because I don't want to hide, you know, City Hall and people that want to take photographs and things.
So here's what I would suggest, if the council thinks that is a good path to go down, I would plug $15,000 in to the budget. And then what we would do is we would come back to the council with probably some renderings, with showing the photo of City Hall in the background, showing where that LED sign would, where it would actually be, some ideas, some, trying to position a way that citizens could see it and it wouldn't be obnoxiously centered in front of everything.
And keep in mind, we're looking at a fountain for out front.
Right.
So all that.
Right.
Design work in there. What do, what does you guys think?
I like it. Yeah, I like it.
Okay.
Okay. So Shawna, will you include that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So 15, $15,000 is the dollar amount that we'd like to?
I think that's what I would include.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Does that include the installation?
Yes.
Okay. Good question. I'd like to ask for consideration of a mayor $200. I don't even think it'll cost that much, but we have a lobbying group that we work through the city and we more than get our money that we spend on the lobbyists back every year in terms of working on bills with, that are presented in the state legislature, making them so they're not onerous on the citizens of our community and us as a city. And we have never printed up any flyers or anything to, for our lobbyists to have to hand out to the different legislatures when you're speaking with them. And I think on some of the other lobbying groups I'm in, we do have flyers and it has contact information for the city for various things. So if they have a question on a bill they're writing or presenting, they need, they need testimony on a bill or something that they can keep that at their fingertips. So if anybody thinks that would be worthwhile? Okay, so maximum of $200?
Shawna, did you hear that as well?
I did, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? So bringing it back up here to the dais, that this is our second reading for Ordinance 1815. What would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Move to approve Ordinance 1815 with two additional items. $15,000 for an LED sign in front of City Hall and $200 for flyers for our lobbyist.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Estes?
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Thank you. All righty, that takes us on to Item 9, New Business. 9A, Considerations of Item Removed from the Consent Agenda. There were none. Item 9B, Public Hearing. I am opening a public hearing and the adoption of resolutions per modification of U.S. Highway 85, URA boundary, and the adoption of the formation of the new East Infill URA in the city. And that is, I assume you're KB?
Kimberly Bailey, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, Public. Kimberly Bailey, Executive Director for the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority. I'm also here joined by our Legal Representative Brownstein. The plan and the land use comp plan developer is online, just in case there are any technical questions regarding that as well. Next slide, please. Just to give you a little refresh of what urban renewal is and how it's established, we are actually designated and determined under the Urban Renewal State Statute to address blight and means of tax increment financing in community needs, but they are actually established as of the local municipality. The Fountain Urban Renewal Authority is coined FIRA, just for an acronym for clarity. And we identify capacity funding and work with the property owners and unproductive land assets to move commercial development and bring in new services and goods at large. We work in tandem with the City of Fountain towards cultivating community, place making, quality spaces, as well as commercial capacity infrastructure to support that new commercial development within URA jurisdiction areas. Next slide, please. This is the general rundown of the brief topics and goals that we'll cover in tonight's hearing and then of course address any questions there may be thereof. And then the closing actions recommended for City Council resolutions. Next slide, please. So in general, the East Infill land area consumes about 213 acres. There's a total of 22 parcels. We'll give you a geographic site locate in the next slide briefly, but this is the overall estimated valuation of those parcels in this defined area proposed for urban renewal designation. Next slide. So this is the designation area. If you can imagine the Mesa Ridge Parkway, the Duckwood Road corridor, and you look at that from an aerial scope downward, it's basically a donut hole. It's a very vacant undeveloped parcel, but everything is grown around and developed within that encusment area. Under Urban Renewal State Statute, there are actually 11 conditions of blight assessment. We have to meet at least one, but in this defined block analysis by the consultant team, you can see we meet nine of the 11 under the state statute requirement. Next slide, please. So the goals of the plan are to address blight, that is our primary addressment under state statute. We are also looking to encourage private investment. We procure some of the capital improvement needs through tax increment financing, also an acronym known as TIF, just to be clarified there as well. We do improve towards transportation, safety, infrastructure, connectivity. We must conform under the Comprehensive Land Use Plan of the local municipality is also a requirement of the plan goals and to derive community benefit and needs. I think specifically for this council, it's important that it does also align with one of your measures under your strategic plan, which are on the bar, board markers right behind me, and that is to address transportation infrastructure. Next slide, please. So just to be a little clearer on infill, so the infill area, as you see on the map to the left, is really the east side of the infill area. It does address the corridor, if you can envision, Lowe's is the white box on your far right. That parcel wraps around on the north end. The Mesa Ridge Parkway is snaked in between there. And then below that, you have the majority land by a significant property owner in the community. You have Mesa Road, and then below that is considered the Duckwood Crossing area, which is owned by multiple landowners. Under urban renewal, all landowners must consent and provide a waiver to participate. They all have in this procedural process. In 2020, your Economic Development Department presented to you an incentive policy proposal, and in that was an incentive agreement for procuring and incentivizing infill redevelopment. And that was supported by council at that time. At that time, in this eastward corridor, 1.2 million in infrastructure deficit for water and electric utility was already preconceived and identified and hindering commercial development entry into the community. Fast forward to the graphic on the right is actually the proposal transportation and pedestrian safety improvement infrastructure that is now being necessitated by CDOT. It was unforeseen until this point in time. So to open up the egress access to that eastward parcel, as well as anything in that Duckwood corridor with a future Duckwood connection, which is actually a city right-of-way jurisdiction, Mesa Ridge Parkway is a CDOT state highway jurisdiction, we are foreseeing a 23 million deficit in infrastructure development needs under transportation. Hence why the city and urban renewal have been working collaboratively towards the proposal of establishing this East Infill Urban Renewal Area. With that, I'm going to transition and allow our Brownstein representative to discuss the TIF increment financing as well as the comprehensive land use.
May I have the next slide, please? Thank you, good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of city staff, and members of the public. My name is Carolyn White. I'm with the Brownstein Law Firm and I'm special counsel to FIRA. It was my pleasure to work with the FIRA team and the city team in putting together this proposal for this new urban renewal plan for you. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of the legal requirements and explain to you how those were fulfilled in this case and talk a little bit how the tax increment financing works. So one of the legal requirements is that any new urban renewal plan must first be presented to the Planning Commission of the jurisdiction, and they review it to make a finding as to its consistency with the comprehensive plan. That did happen back on October 1st. The Planning Commission reviewed the comprehensive plan against the urban renewal plan. They wrote a letter transmitting their findings to you, City Council, finding conformance with the comprehensive plan. And some of the key points of that letter are summarized on this slide. I won't read them to you, but suffice it to say that they did in fact find that the proposed urban renewal plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So next slide, please. So I don't know if the colors are coming through exactly on this, but what this is is a zoomed-in piece of the urban renewal area. These parcels colored in purple are in the existing 85 corridor urban renewal. These parcels colored in purple are in the existing 85 corridor urban renewal plan. And what the proposal before you, that is accomplished in a series of four different resolutions, is first to amend the existing plan, to take these parcels out of that plan, then to adopt a new plan that includes these parcels plus additional parcels, and that new plan is the East Infill Urban Renewal Plan. And then the final two resolutions are to approve the sales tax and use tax sharing for the new urban renewal plan. So the financial effect of that, which is summarized on this slide, these purple parcels right here that are in the existing Highway 85 urban renewal plan, right now, the property tax increment is being diverted to FURA under the existing plan. Under the new plan, it doesn't include any property tax authorization. So all that property tax is going to come back to the city, to the other taxing bodies, the county, the school district, et cetera. This new urban renewal plan is proposed for only sales tax sharing, and that's a 50-50 share, and that's what's covered in those last two resolutions. So this slide kind of summarizes what that proposal is. All the property taxes going back to the city and the other taxing bodies, we're going to propose to share sales tax and use tax 50-50 going forward for the new plan area, which includes a piece of the old plan area plus some new parcels. Next slide. This shows the complete new plan area, all colored in the same color. In my map, it's blue, but again, on this slide, it doesn't really look blue to my eye. And this slide just summarizes what our projections are of the likely potential development program that we think is going to occur within this plan area, particularly with the investment in transportation that makes it feasible to develop here. And so you can see, we're looking at about 173,000 square feet of new commercial development along Mesa Ridge. We've got another 14,000 square feet within the Duckwood addition, and that is all made possible by the potential to generate around 23 million in transportation improvements coming off of that shared net new sales tax increment within the new plan area. The maximum term under the statute is 25 years, and that's what the plan allows for. That sharing will happen over a maximum period of 25 years. Next slide. So this slide just summarizes the four resolutions before you. Again, the first resolution amends the existing plan to pull those purple parcels out. The second resolution adopts the new plan, including the old parcels and the new parcels. And the last two resolutions approve the cooperation agreements, which authorize the sharing of sales tax and use tax increment, no property tax. So that's the conclusion of our formal presentation. We're delighted to answer any questions that you have or provide any additional information. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey, did you have anything else?
No, Mayor, you're not.
Okay.
Unless you have questions, or anybody else has questions.
Okay, I just want to make sure we were done, done. Okay, thank you. All right, any questions from council up here? Okay, so all four of the next resolutions will have to do back with, with what we were just presented. Okay, all right, any questions? All right, is this a public hearing? So I'm going to turn this back over to the public, and if you have a question, please come down to the center podium and use the center button to turn on the microphone. And so is there anyone in the audience that has any questions? Is there anyone online?
No questions online, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Three, two, one. Okay, I am closing the public hearing for this item and bringing it back up here for the dais for the resolutions. Resolution number one, Resolution 25-054, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain finding and declaring a proposed modification to the U.S. Highway 85 corridor urban renewal plan to be, to be a minor modification of the plan and approving such modification. Ms. Kimberly, do you have anything to say on that?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Council, what would council like to do with that? Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve Resolution 25-054.
Councilmember Geek?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Thank you. That takes us to Resolution 25-055, a resolution making certain legislative findings and approving the East Infill urban renewal plan. Ms. Bailey?
No, Mayor, please proceed.
Thank you. All right. What would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton?
I make, excuse me, I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-055.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Resolution 25-056, a resolution of the City of Fountain approving a sales tax sharing and cooperation agreement with the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority to finance the East Infill urban renewal project. Ms. Bailey?
I'm good, Mayor, please proceed.
Thank you. What would council like to do with this? Councilmember Geek?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-056.
Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Takes us to Resolution 25-057, a resolution of the City of Fountain approving a use tax sharing and cooperation agreement with the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority to finance the East Infill urban renewal project. What would council like to do with this? Ooh, I skipped Ms. Bailey, sorry.
You're fine, please proceed, thank you.
What would council like to do with this?
Move to approve Resolution 25-057.
Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Oh, man, if we could get through all our business like that every night, we'd be cooking. That's right.
Sorry for jumping the gun on the last one.
That's okay, don't worry about it. All righty, you're getting, trying to get home for that Lakers game, what time? 7:30?
8:30.
8:30, okay. Oh, well, we can slow things down here. That takes us to City Council Agenda Requests. Any agenda requests tonight? No? All righty. And announcement of an executive session?
No, ma'am.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.